Good evening, everyone. This is the, let's see, December 5th, 2022 Select Board Meeting in Lakeville. First thing I'm gonna do is ask Selectman Carboni to read the announcements. Happy to do that. Okay, so we would like to offer our condolences to the families and friends of Roger Hamilton and Doug Mills on their recent passings. Both men were longtime residents of Lakeville and well-respected members of our community, having served the town for several decades. Roger served as our Chief Engineer of the Lakeville Fire Department from 1961 through 1990, and serving on the Board of Fire Engineers from 1980 through 1988. He also served as the Highway Surveyor for Lakeville from 1981 through 2007. In addition to those positions, Roger also served the town as its Street Warden, Drug Testing Officer, Public Weir, and Municipal Right-to-Know Coordinator. He was a member of the Wage and Personnel Advisory Group, Emergency Planning Group, the Communications Committee, and served as Lakeville's representative on the Joint Transportation Planning Group. Doug joined the Lakeville Fire Department in 1954. He served as Deputy Chief and then Chief from 1979 until his retirement in 1996. He also served as the town's Hazardous Waste Coordinator and Municipal Right-to-Know Coordinator, and as a member of the Board of Fire Engineers, American Rescue Truck Study Committee, Emergency Planning Committee, Communications Committee, Capital Expenditure Committee, Water Advisory Committee, and Town Office Building Evaluation Study Committee. That was a little difficult. And I also just wanted to say that we had some local activities this weekend that seemed to be very well-attended. The Lake the Lions Club had their annual tree lighting ceremony, which was scheduled on Saturday, but due to weather, it was last evening. The Council on Aging had a wreath sale on Sunday, and I guess, you know, they did very, very well with that. And our Lakeville Arts Council had their annual All That Glitters event Friday evening and Saturday, and also very well-attended. That's it for me. All right. Anything much?
No, most of them.
I'd just like to thank Chief O'Brien for helping the Mills family put together the funeral service for Doug Mills. So I know a lot of work went into that, and I heard it was very, very nice. Okay, next we have Town Administrator announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Town meeting approved an article requesting a special act of the Legislature to expand the Select Board to three to five members. The article has been submitted to the town's Legislative Delegation for the Legislature's upcoming session. I spoke with Plymouth County Treasurer O'Brien today regarding the status of our ARPA application. I was informed that there will be a formal notification forthcoming, providing approval for the water sewer improvements with the county's ARPA application. While the county continues to state that the total town hall bathroom is ineligible under this category, Treasurer O'Brien stated that the county is preparing a revenue replacement account, which will be able to fund the portions of the application that have been declared ineligible. I was assured by him that the restroom will be provided funding using this approach. Treasurer O'Brien also stated that he and Commissioner Jared Valenzuela, who is the designated ARPA liaison, are willing to meet with the Select Board in an upcoming meeting. Town council met with the lead bidder for the First Street Cell Tower lease on Friday. The lease is nearly complete and should be ready for review by the Select Board shortly. Our new facilities manager, Paul Nees, started today. Aside from familiarizing himself with the town's facilities management staff and operations, Paul's initial priorities will involve completing work in the town hall fire station. As you know, we're also continuing to work with our on-call project manager to do his other projects, such as the handicapped access for the old library and the outdoor stage cover. We've completed our analysis for the Lakeville Martial Arts Club lease renewal. Utility costs, which are about 40% over two years ago, will be a principal driver for the rent, anticipate being ready to submit a draft for the Select Board's consideration shortly. Town staff held our FY '24 budget kickoff last week. With the budget process underway, we'll be looking with interest at the state's joint revenue hearing, which will be upcoming later this month. The town is continuing to seek snowplow contractors for the winter months. Interested operators are encouraged to call the Department of Public Works at 508-947-9521. The next regular meeting of the Select Board will be on December 19th at 6:00 PM at the Lakeville Police Station. I say, Madam Chair, I was at the funeral on Saturday. It was a very moving event. Very well done.
All right. Any questions for Ari, anyone?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Having to do with the ARPA funding. You said they weren't gonna support the bathroom. Does that mean they'll support the water connection and the septic system?
Yes.
So we applied for this last June.
Yes.
Okay? And as has happened in the past with the COVID money, we don't get positive response on a timely basis. Okay? I still think that's a problem.
I agree.
And the other question that I have is that, what do we get in our money?
I was assured today, this is again, this is the first time I've actually had, despite, as you know, I've been asking them continually about this. This is the first time that I've had a firm response from the treasurer that we were gonna, what was being approved and what wasn't being approved. And in the bathroom, as I said, it'll be handled through a different process, but Madam Chair said it'll approve that as well. I don't have a timeline for when we get the money or when we get the formal approval. He told me the formal notification will be coming soon.
Well, I think we ought to press him, and I think we ought to ask him to come here because it's confusing out there, what they're approving and what they're not approving. He went to the town of Rochester's Select Board meeting last week, and he told them that they would pay for the design services for their new fire and police station. What is it? You know, what is qualified and what isn't qualified? I think we ought to invite him in, and I think we ought to invite the chairman of the Plymouth County Commissioner in because everything we try to do, we're fighting and fighting to get the money. And so there's still confusion as to what we're entitled to and what we're not entitled to. So I think that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and I think that was what I mentioned too after the last meeting they had, that there was a person, the Selectman from, I don't know if it was West Bridgewater or Bridgewater. They were in the same situation where they said, oh, we're giving you this much, but then we're capping it. And I don't know what, listening to an hour-long meeting, there's still no rhyme or reason as to how they're approving or not approving things.
Certainly not gonna try to justify the process. I can't. So I will be happy to let them know that the Select Board would still like to meet with them, and if I have to come on the 19th.
That would be great. All right, so. At 6:15, so I guess we can do a couple of other things, as long as that's... Let's see. Six looks easy. Yeah, six does look easy, doesn't it? Yeah. So we'll go to number six. So when there's a change of manager, where there is a liquor license involved, they have to, whatever the restaurant or place is, has to, the license they have has to show that. So my only question on this, Ari, is do we know how long they were operating with a new manager before contacting us?
Tracy.
Tracy?
One out of Canada, it's been several months.
Okay. So let's... Okay, so they're requesting a change of manager, and they've submitted all the paperwork here. I don't know if anyone has any questions on it, other than that question.
And that's not a penalty that we would instill. That's from the ABCC, right?
Yeah.
No, we would be the ones that would hold with a local licensing authority. So we would be the ones that would issue a letter, you know, call them in, et cetera.
But that's only if we knew.
Right.
Correct.
That's, I think where I'm going to, the applications for renewal though have already gone out, haven't they?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so if they hadn't gone out, I was gonna suggest we put a reminder in there to remind people when they do need to do a manager change, it should be done quickly, but maybe we can do an email after the fact or something. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the change of manager to Karen Donahue for the Beck Nine Club.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. 6:09. All right, uh, let's see. Uh, let's just do the minutes, which is number 12. That goes down. So this was the... Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments or anything on these minutes?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
The item of the reorganization of the Select Board?
Yep.
Okay. It does not mention that I asked for a motion to appoint a new chairperson.
Okay.
And the Select Person, Select Person Carboni and Fabian did not make a motion to do that, and should be reflected in the minutes.
Okay.
Because that's what it was about, it was brought to reorganization of the board.
Yep. Okay, um, can we make that change?
You agree with that, Maureen? Yes. That's fine with me.
Yep. Okay. So then I'll entertain a mo... Was that it?
No, I have another thing.
Okay.
On the... On the new business? It says that the Board voted to have Carboni, Select Board Member Carboni, be the, on the Safety Committee?
Yep.
For the Regional School District?
Yep.
Okay, this was not on the agenda.
Yeah, and I don't think we put to ratify it on this one either, right?
No.
Okay.
So the other question I have about that is actually Ari's email that he sent to the Board basically said that, you know, they're asked for that, but the school committee hasn't made a decision on the Safety Committee at all. I know their meeting is Wednesday night, but it's not on their agenda as well, so I don't understand what they're doing. So if they're gonna form a Safety Committee or whatever, and they have representatives of the school committee, they have to vote for the members as well.
All right, so...
This has to be put on the next agenda to be voted on, if that's what we want?
Yep, so we'll put that on the next agenda. I don't know how we would, we don't really change that, other than to put it on the next agenda, so. All right, so with those corrections, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from November 22nd.
So moved.
I will step down in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
I'm staying.
What does everyone's clock say?
6:14.
Can I go at 6:14? It's not like a license. Well, I can do this. I can tell folks that John Oliveri is the Chair of the Board of Assessors, if you'd like to come forward.
6:15.
Okay. You're good to go. So again, this is John Oliveri. He is the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, and what we're gonna be talking about is the annual tax rate clarification, oh, I'm sorry, classification hearing. This is the point of the year where I know we had mentioned it throughout the year this year, that this takes place, the setting of the whether we have a single tax rate or something different. This is the time of year that it takes place, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Select Board. As Leah had pointed out, it's that time of year, tax classification hearing. John Oliveri, the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, also joined by virtually this evening, Harald Scheid, who is the Regional Assessor for the town, along with David Golden, who is the Associate Regional Assessor for the town. They work for RRG, who the town contracts with to take care of the assessing duties for Lakeville. The Board has met, and I will start off with advising that we voted unanimously to recommend keeping a single tax rate, but rather than getting into the details, I am going to turn it over to Harald Scheid at this point to go through the presentation in regards to the hearing, and he will explain the details. And in addition, we also will add some commentary on, to clarify, because I know there have been some questions, at least over the past few months, if not the past year, in regards to different, maybe the best way to put it is the protocol, as far as how we can set class, set tax rates by industry and what the splits can actually be, so.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Right ahead.
We need to open the hearing, I guess, Tracy, yes? I'll entertain a motion to open the tax classification hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, John.
Okay, not a problem. I'm just kinda laying out the ground for where we're going, and I will now turn it over to Harald to start the presentation.
Well, good evening. I wanna make sure first everyone can hear me. Yes. Okay, great. You should have before you a document that was prepared for this hearing tonight. I'm going to basically walk you through that with the assistance of my colleague, David Golden. I don't wanna steal his thunder, because much of the work that has been done by our office in the last year comes at the hand of David and the many hours that he has put in assisting with the revaluation, which we'll talk about here shortly. This is the single event that takes place at the end of the assessment calendar that precedes the filing of all of our state forms and hopefully within the next few days, approval of Lakeville's new tax rate. Let me share the document on the screen. I assume everyone can see this.
Yep.
And I'll page through this, but just not talking line by line, word by word, to the document, but maybe highlighting some of the key bits of information that the use of Select Board will wanna know and the viewing public. This year, that is fiscal year 2023, is that year in the life of our office where we conduct a full revaluation, the results of which are reviewed extensively by the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue undertakes what amounts to almost a year-long audit of all of our practices, all of our specifically assessment practices, but also the proposed valuations that we have now put on properties. I wanna comment briefly on that, maybe list a little assistance from David, who's closer to the numbers, but the new valuations the taxpayers will see on their tax bills this January reflect an estimate of the value of all Lakeville properties on January 1st of 2022. And to establish those values, we look at the 12-month sales period preceding that assessment date. So the year in focus is calendar year 21, so sales transactions that took place during that year form the basis of our new assessments. Anybody that's had their ear to the ground or their eyes wide open to what happened in calendar year 21 recognizes that there was a considerable surge in property values. That surge began actually a year before in 2020, and evidence also suggests that property values have been on the incline into the first part of calendar year 22. But focusing on calendar year 21, we saw a sharp increase in property values, though that increase has to be reflected in our new assessments. David, can you talk a little bit about the major classes and roughly the percentage increase that we're seeing due to the revaluation?
Yeah, our residential property values appreciated about 12.6% overall, and in values, it varies a little bit between, you know, the single families and the multifamilies, the two families and the three families. But overall, the residential side appreciated about 11.1%. The industrial values went up 11.5%. The commercial values went up 11.1%, and our personal property went up about 14.2% overall.
So fairly uniform increase in values, though when we give these sorts of statistics, I should point out that they often represent an average increase. There are property owners who will see their values increase more than 12%, and for a few, their increases will be less than 12%. Averages, of course, are made up of highs and lows and everything in between, but as a, as a measure of the overall, about 12% to 13% increases in value. That comes on the heels of fairly strong value increases last year and what we anticipate to be another round of value increases next year. For the taxpayer, of course, there are two factors at play in establishing your annual tax. It's the assessed value, which we just spoke about, and the tax rate. And so typically, what we find is that when valuations go up, there is a compensating adjustment in the town's tax rate. So values go up, tax rate goes down. Ultimately, of course, the town requires more revenue to run its operations, and taxpayers should anticipate somewhat of an increase in their tax bills. The document, I'll share it with you, that I'm sharing with you, will reveal a little bit about what those average tax bills will look like. I wanna point you to this page headed by the word terminology. We're looking at a property tax levy of $28,305,745. That, when we talk property tax levy, we're talking about the total number of tax dollars that will be raised through property taxation. Property tax, the property tax represents only one of four principal sources of revenue, but it is by far the most significant contributor to the town's coffers. Scrolling down, you'll see that our residential tax base represents about 87.5% of the total. And for that reason, it, and coming to the whole question of tax classification, it takes a significant increase in, it would take a significant increase in the commercial, industrial, personal property class to yield a modest residential rate reduction. Essentially, about a 7% increase would yield a 1% reduction in residential taxes. And it's largely for that reason that the Board of Assessors has recommended against implementing a split tax rate. We are projecting at this time a tax rate reduction from $12.07 last year to $11.15 this year. I wanna point out that this new tax rate is estimated until the Department of Revenue reviews and approves all of the forms that we will be submitting tomorrow. We don't know exactly what that tax rate will be. If we're calculating a tax rate of $11.15, it's doubtful that it would change more than a penny, plus or minus, from that amount. So tax impacts. On the residential, single-family side, you'll see last year's average valued home stood at $449,200, yielding an average tax bill of $5,422. That average valuation is increasing to just under a half a million at the new estimated tax rate of $11.15. That average tax bill would go up to $5,574 for an increase of about 2.8%. You'll see on the commercial side, a similar, roughly 2.9% increase in the average commercial tax bill. Sliding down to the next page, voting a tax shift factor, assuming that the Select Board desires to maintain Lakeville's single tax rate, we offer up a proposed motion that can be read into the record. And adopting this language essentially is the official way of coming in with a single tax rate. We provide then a summary of values by major property class, and with that, David and I will entertain any questions.
Okay. Harald, in the simplest terms possible, while we had the Lakeville Country Club issue going on, some folks had suggested that, you know, we just charge warehouses more. Can you explain to us why that's not possible?
So let me understand the question. Lakeville Country Club carries a value for one type of property, and what is being suggested?
Well, there was a sentiment that if we have to have warehouses, that perhaps we could charge just warehouses more taxes, but that's not, you can't just charge one industry something different. Can you sort of explain that?
Well, if you're adopting a single tax rate, of course, it would apply against the valuation of any class of properties and do so uniformly. uh and and do so uniformly. Um if the question is, uh do you take the, if you were to take the acreage and and turn that acreage into an industrial park, would it yield more revenue?
No.
Let me, let me, let me, let me, Harald, to to simplify this, I guess maybe the 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 question that that has arisen. Um it it looks, it it, it was prompted by Lakeville Country Club. But in general, the real question is, what are the limitations the town has from an assessment standpoint to turn around and say, listen, we're going to pick certain industries, not, obviously, we have the, you know, we have residential, we have commercial, we have industrial, we have personal property. Can we turn around and say, listen, within that industrial, we 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 want to charge warehouses a different tax rate? Um we want to charge different types of businesses different, we want to take a look and say, listen, can we charge new businesses more tax rate than those that have already been established and in town? To kind of add as a as a guard against um keeping the character of the town the way it is.
No.
That's maybe the explanation we need.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you. Uh the system's pretty straightforward. It all comes down to a function of market value. Um there are no special discounts uh or opportunities to uh somehow um increase a class of properties' values arbitrarily uh to uh yield some sort of um perceived beneficial effect. Um it all comes down to market value uh and if one property carries a higher value than a a different type of property, it still ultimately comes down to our um analysis of market data that um helps us define what that property would be worth on the open market.
And the tax rate stays the same from property to property as well. If you're classified as residential, we all have houses in town here and we're all going to pay the same rate. It's going to fluctuate based on the value of our house from a real estate standpoint, but the actual rate itself is going to be consistent, stay the same, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And it doesn't matter whether we turn around and say, going forward, we want to charge new people or new properties an additional um or or a different rate, it doesn't matter. Everyone's going to get the same rate no matter what. There is no opportunity. And that's regulated by the the D O R. That that's comes from the state. We don't even, we we don't, we can't turn around and decide we're going to just arbitrarily change it ourselves.
And in fact, part of the value certification process we went through uh deals with uh this whole question of equitable treatment. Um one of uh one of the the purposes of that uh once every fifth-year audit is to make sure that we aren't somehow uh singling out one class of property for preferential treatment over another.
So the state has that in place and they actually audit us to make sure we don't do that. The town will get itself into extremely hot water if we started, you know, pinpointing certain classes of businesses, certain properties and try and get a higher tax rate from them.
If I can.
That is correct.
If I can, I I think that this question might fall under shifting the tax burden section, Harald, that you have on, um I don't know what page it is, uh where you, we would be shifting the task, tax burden from um not about the assessments or anything like that, it's just about shifting the tax burden. And you start, you did touch upon it and you said that it was um the increase would be, you know, approximately seven percent um to yield a one percent residential tax rate reduction. Um which means that there, the C I P, which is the Commercial Industrial Tax Base, correct, would go up about nineteen thousand. So it's about, we're discussing about shifting the tax burden away from the residential and putting it on commercial.
And that's the only thing we could do is shift it away from residential and onto commercial. It would be all of a commercial. It wouldn't be specific industries within commercial. It's it's all or nothing.
Right, and that was, I think, the clarification that um we're trying to seek here.
Right, yeah, I think there are some folks around town who think we have a lot more flexibility and we can pick industries in certain areas and and we can't. It's businesses, C I P is going to get charged one rate and residential is going to get charged another rate if we went split, or it's single. That's your, those are your two options.
And let me add to this, that um um a lot of the open space in in Lakeville uh is in one of the chapter programs, so um forestry, agriculture, recreation. Um the, in those classes of property, those chapter properties, the commercial tax rate applies. So a higher commercial tax rate would uh apply to um to much of the open space, uh the privately owned pre- uh um open space uh within the the corporate boundaries of Lakeville.
Okay.
So you, for example, you own a uh a cranberry bog, uh some number of acres that uh is being set, assessed under Chapter sixty-one A. Um if the town were to adopt a split rate, that higher rate would apply to those cranberry bogs.
If I can um just ask a question, where would it be beneficial? Um I mean, if we had a a stronger commercial, industrial base, um I'm just going to use maybe random came to mind. Um where they have a lot of industrial, a lot of commercial base.
That tends to be the communities that that do take the split um tax rate uh route. Although, correct me if I'm wrong, Harald, more and more communities who have split are actually working their way back towards towards single um at this point. So it's because the, in most cases, the commercial uses less town services, et cetera, and and most communities are trying to get more commercial because it will, that's really the way to offset your residential tax base is you get a larger commercial base.
Okay.
That's exactly correct.
Okay, good.
See, I've been paying attention to Harald, actually. Listen to you sometimes.
Okay, um does anyone in the, okay, I'll let Rich, you can go, and then I was going to ask if anyone else in the crowd has any.
Yeah, Rich, you can also report. Um you mentioned that the personal property valuations were up fourteen point two percent. Is that based upon the valuation or is that based upon the personal property high uh valuation?
You want to take that, David, or do you want me to?
Yeah, I mean, it it's it's both, uh although uh personal property um has a depreciation factor that's applied to it. And so an existing business that has, say, a ten bank, a bank of ten computers, uh those computers are valued based on the year which they were acquired. And so, you know, a a computer that's ten years old isn't valued the same as a brand-new computer. Um and so although there there are um, there have been increases in values, there there's also uh new growth that's included in that.
Can you tell me how much was the increase in uh new new personal property, not the value?
Uh, let's see here. I can, I need to pull it up though.
While you're looking for that, I might comment that um uh if if we dove into it, we'd find probably that ninety to ninety-five percent of that increase is newly taxable assets.
Yes.
So you're not increasing the evaluation, these are just new new items?
Yes.
Yes, that would be the the vast majority of it.
So why, why didn't the personal property taxes, this, you're saying it's going up fourteen point two percent valuation? That's really not correct.
Yeah, so personal property is quite different than real estate. Uh if you can imagine uh your car, for example, your your motor vehicle is a uh uh is considered personal property. Uh does your car appreciate in value? Um no, probably not.
Okay, just to follow up to that question, um and this is um I hate to say this, but this is geared to the marijuana companies that we have in town, which have had significant increases in personal property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the one, going to pick on three ten, Kenishwell's Drive. How much of an increase was the personal property tax at three ten, Kenishwell's Drive?
Um, that would require a a a look into that account. Um not sure that we're prepared to answer that tonight, but we could certainly uh.
Well, my point, my point is that this thirty-one million dollars in personal property taxes uh based upon the uh the uh industrial, commercial is low, in my opinion, very low. Does every single commercial, industrial um have uh personal property that's been taxed?
Well, so let me uh let me comment here because personal property taxation uh is a unique creature, especially here in Massachusetts. Um whether or not your assets are taxable uh is dependent of on your um on your uh form, your business form. For example, corporations uh are largely exempt from taxation um on uh everything from inventory to um refrigerated equipment. I mean, there's a long list of of exemptions uh that relate to commercial personal property. Industrial prop- uh commer- industrial personal property is totally exempt uh with the exception of what the s- statue calls for uh the taxation of poles, lines, and conduits. That's essentially uh what you would find in a public utility. So really, the lion's share of of personal property that the town collects is on the mom-and-pop uh businesses of the sole proprietors.
I disagree, I disagree with you because the marijuana marijuana uh facilities are being taxed, personal property taxes.
Well, that that's true, but again, we have to go to the business form. So you have not only corporations, you have uh limited liability uh for uh companies. Uh the rules are different for those, what's taxable, what's not. Uh so it's not, not a straightforward uh answer, but what you'll um find is that um uh that the larger the company and the more industrial uh the the nature of that company, uh the the lower the the personal property tax liability.
So I'm 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 sure that you check out all of these, right, to make sure?
Yes, we have. Uh we retain a uh specialty firm, um R R C, uh that annually comes in and uh um canvases the town, works up the personal property valuations. Uh it's the, it's a whole area of expertise that uh that um they are exceptionally uh proficient at. Um but uh personal property is looked at very closely.
Okay, let's go to industrial, a hundred and thirteen million dollars here in industrial property based upon the evaluation. Now, is that uh valuation or is that a combination of uh new construction? Uh as you say, eleven point five percent uh increase in industrial base. So what is that made up of?
There is some uh growth in that, but the lion's share of that is uh reassessment uh based on the market and uh the same dynamics that come into play with residential and commercial properties. Um that uh increased in 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 market uh value is is captured in the new assessment.
Okay, but if they do any um any modifications or constructions or whatever, then it gets added right to the base, right?
Harald, I'm going to jump in.
It gets added and it would be part of that percentage that you're looking at.
Just, just, we have actually on certain uh facilities in town, um in general, we do keep an eye on that. We have um had adjustments, um if they were X one year, but they've added, they've added stuff, put additions on and whatnot, they have been increased.
Okay, then I have a, I have a loaded question. Three ten, Kenishwell's Drive was assessed at ten million dollars last year, okay? It was sold for almost twenty-six million dollars, right?
I I don't know off the top of my head, to be honest with you, but I'll, I'll.
It was, I checked the field cards.
Okay.
So the question becomes, how do you change that assessment to have the right valuation for that piece of property, which was probably undervalued in the first place? But, you know, that's significant, okay? That adds to the tax base, that affects the tax rate for the residential tax rates as well. So based on that and looking at that particular property only, you always talk about, I need sales information. We have sales information. Doesn't that apply to the other industrial areas having to do with the warehouses and the distribution centers or whatever?
So here again, um you're dealing with a a complex situation when you have a sale, especially of a uh an industrial concern like a marijuana facility, there are three components uh of value that play into that sale price. You have the real estate, of course, you have the value of personal property. But a major component uh is the value of the going concern. Uh the value of that business enterprise, which isn't personal property or real estate, has a value. And that's captured in that sale price, so.
That business, they didn't sell the business, they just sold the building. So they didn't sell the business at all.
If I, if I might jump in.
They sold, they sold the business with thirty-five million. They they sold the building separately.
Yeah, if I might jump in here as well, uh this property is a unique uh property on in town. It is a a building comprised of commercial um uh condominiums, which uh were previously held by a single owner and were all sold to a single owner. Uh and so because they were sold together as a package, uh we, that that would uh render the sale invalid for uh statistics, statistical analysis. And so our um uh our approach uh is, as Harald said, uh to also uh take take into account the um the the business enterprise value as well.
Um, the enterprise was not sold, it was sold separately. The building was sold, just the building alone.
Yes, but it was, it was not a building that was sold, it was multiple condominium units that were sold.
Sold from one owner to one owner, not individually, they haven't been sold individually, they're all leased. Anyways, I just, you know, I I I take that number as low because I think the personal property taxes are really much, just my opinion.
Okay, does anyone in the audience have any questions about the assessors and why we um do this and look at the double, whether we want a single tax rate or uh not? Okay, all right. Okay, um so the, are we done? Close the hearing?
Close the hearing.
Okay, um I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. So moved. I'll step down in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so um it was, the assessors voted to make a recommendation to the selectmen that we stay with the single tax rate, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if that's the case, then I will entertain a motion that the Lakeville Select Board vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifty-six, as amended the percentage of local tax levy, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three tax rates and set the residential factor at one with a corresponding C I P shift of one uh pending approval of the town's annual tax recap by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Thank you to the Board of Assessors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harald. Thank you, John.
David.
David. Um, all right, so. Ah, let's see. Okay, next we have discussion on the formation of a fire station building committee. So this is just a very early um part of the process. The um money for the schematic design was approved at uh the town meeting. So um Ari wrote us a letter um with some suggestions, nothing is set in stone. Um when the, I'm just going to compare it a little bit. When the, I'm just gonna compare it a little bit to the police station building committee, I think had eleven people. I wasn't part of that, but I thought eleven people was a bit cumbersome. I think five is definitely too few. I think what we need to have is at least one community at large member. But I'm open to suggestions to anyone who may want to make a suggestion, but I would also like the fire chief, Chief O'Brien, to join us at the table. All right. So, so Madam Vice Chair, you had said that you compared the two, which is great. What are we, what members are we losing from this list?
I haven't, like, compared them.
Oh, okay.
I just, um, just, I was trying to see if we could just put something together and then once that group is together, they can sort of go through, you know, the initial steps and what was done the last time, whether it's, I think, Lorraine, you had mentioned something to Ari about, you know, comparing the charge for the group or, so. Any thoughts as to who the fire chief would like to see on the, do you think the fire chief should be on the building committee?
I would appreciate it, that's for sure. I understand the, trying to find that, strike the balance between having a, a big committee that's, that's difficult to steer and difficult to develop a consensus with and, and then having too small of a committee that doesn't have all the technical expertise that you might want on it. I do, this is my first building committee, admittedly, and so I would defer to others' expertise who have been on committees at other times. I do feel that there should be representation from the fire department, not just by the fire chief, but maybe a member of the, you know, a member of the call side of the department and a member of the full-time side of the fire department, just to get two perspectives within the fire department and two, two points of view that might bring more to the table than, than just the administrative perspective that I carry.
Okay. I think, Ari, what you and I had talked about were, and I think you mentioned you had talked to Lorraine about it too, was adding the Inspection Services Director, which would be Nate Darling, Building Commissioner, a Select Board Member, of course, the Town Administrator. I do believe Brian Day, Chair of the Finance Committee, said that it would be nice for them to have a seat, so I think that's good. Rich, I know you've been on most of the building committees we've had here. I don't know if you want to suggest some other people or even a number of people.
Well, I think that's important. If you look at the thing out there, the plaque out there of the people that have served on it, the chief pointed out, you know, talking about call firefighters and whatever, what we did at the police, police station building committee, we had a subcommittee because they don't get involved and once you determine, you know, what the requirements are and so forth and so on, they're gonna lose interest in it because it really has nothing to do with them, you know, as far as, you know, putting it out to bid and doing this and doing that. So I would discourage us from saying, let's put a, not that I'm against having the call firefighters and the firefighters involved, but you do that with a subcommittee because when you do the requirements and what the needs analysis are, what the actual requirements are, that's when you get them involved. But I mean, after that, once you get the preliminary design and so forth and so on, and the building committee has to do all the other stuff, you know, associated with the bids and all that. One of the things that I thought was important at the, the police station building committee, and actually the COA and the library, as a matter of fact, that the members at large, you know, the members at large were very, very important because they came from either engineering firms or construction companies, project managers or whatever, and they added tremendous value, you know, to that. And then they would say to us, oh, no, the architect's not doing this right, the project manager isn't doing that right. And with that type of expertise, I think is important. So, I mean, I would say that we need at least three members at large, you know, to serve on it with, define, you know, the expertise. So it's not a matter of, yeah, I wanna be on the fire station building committee, then I have any clearance. I don't think that's a good idea, but, so.
Okay.
And we did that with all three of them, COA, library, police station.
Lorraine, you wanna weigh in?
The only, it might be part of like a, a subgroup, you know, definitely have IT perspective here too, especially with the technology, you know, tie-in piece for here.
I envision that we bring them in as we need to.
As we need to, yeah. I mean, that was the only element that I felt, you know, needed to be.
We did the same thing with the police station building committee. We set up the IT group, which included all the technology, which included, you know, the cell towers that are required, the equipment that's needed for the dispatch center and stuff like that. So those groups got set up, you know, individually and those people were called in, you know, as needed.
Okay. Ari, any other suggestions?
No, I think, I think, I think Rich's points are very well taken. The, the need for a, for technical capacity on the committee would be important, you know, and if there are people who are on Saturday jobs to help out with that, as has been the tradition in this town, I think it'd be foolish not to take advantage of that.
Yep.
So I think as long as you make the members at large of a certain technical consideration or a majority of them or something like that, then you're probably in the right track.
Okay. So I, I don't know that we, that we need to set a, an even or an odd number.
No.
I don't.
Should be an odd number.
I was curious, the other question that I didn't also know, Rich, was who shared, like.
When the building committee is formed, the building committee decides who the chair's gonna be.
Okay, so that gets decided that way. Okay. So this is what I have on my list. I have Fire Chief, Director of Inspection Services, Finance Committee Representative, Select Board Member, Town Administrator, and then members at large. Other folks that could possibly be on subcommittees would be maybe the Town Accountant or Planner, Town Planner.
Not really.
Okay, but, I mean, he would always be available anyways for, you know.
But we don't have to form subcommittees for that. I mean, just, you bring the person in like Todd and he says, okay, and the treasurer, you know, as a matter of fact, we're gonna borrow ten million dollars.
Yep.
What do we need to do? And that's what their goal is.
And then they would come in at that point.
They'd come in and tell us, right.
Okay. So, so I have one, two, three, four, five people and then the at-large members would be, in your opinion, three?
At least three.
At least three?
Yeah.
Can you live with three?
The first that came to mind was, you know, having two, but I'm not opposed to expanding it to three.
Okay, so.
I mean, I don't care. I mean, I'm just, I gave you my opinion, there was four on the police station, so.
Yeah.
And boy, they were good.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, kind of, you know, when some folks do this in their everyday, you know, thing, they know what they're looking for and can represent us pretty well. So that's three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And that's with three members, Leah?
Yeah, that's with three members. So how do we have this? Okay, so it says discuss formation, so it doesn't say vote. So are we all in agreement that these eight should be?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I, I think that, yeah, I think it's a, it's a, would be a, a well-rounded, good working group. I think that.
You need to have an odd number, Leah.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm thinking about. I mean, we could do two at large and then we could.
Can I make a suggestion, Madam Chair?
Yep.
Since this isn't a vote on this one, we could go out and start soliciting applications from members at large.
Yep.
Have our applications in, we can finalize the number.
Yep.
And, and, and form, officially form the committee.
Yeah, so I, I think we can, but everyone agrees that these are pretty, we're all in agreement with all that, with the ones that we have here.
The people that you have here definitely are.
All right, and then.
Who I would like to see on that committee.
Okay, so, so we can't, we're not gonna vote on this, but we all know where we're starting with. And then, of course, you know, we could have subcommittees. So I beli- I believe what we typically do is just ask folks to submit something in writing saying, you know, why they would like to be a part.
Yeah, we'll post something on the website.
Is that how we do that, Rich? Is that how that's been done?
Yeah, but usually you say the building committee's been voted on and then you have people submit the names.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll post something on the website that says that the town is, is, is seeking interested serving on the fire station building committee with technical expertise and we'll see what we get.
Okay.
Because where we haven't voted on this yet, I, you know, I just want to make it clear that we're forming, you know, that we're forming a committee and we're, we're soliciting interested committees.
Yeah.
And Rusty's here, so he can put that paper too.
Madam Chair, this is probably a two, two and a half year commitment.
Right, right.
It's no small project.
Yeah, no, it isn't. And it's a lot of meetings and a lot of times the meetings are during the day because, you know, that's when everyone.
Not necessarily if the members are large because they're working.
Right, right, but all the staff is, you know.
Is it appropriate for an alternative? My, my schedule, as you know, is kind of crazy. The, the bell goes off and I, and I'll be pulled for meetings. Is it appropriate for me to have an alternate, like maybe name my deputy as, as my stand-in if I'm unable to attend?
I would think so.
I would think so.
Yeah.
It's weird, yeah, you designate anyone.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, unless a formal vote to be taken.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't see why she couldn't come to whatever meetings too.
All right, thank you.
You know? So, okay, so we're gonna put out that message and then for the nineteenth, we will put this on the agenda, we will list out the makeup of this. If anyone in the meantime has another position or a change to this, please just get it to Ari and then Ari will summarize and then we will put vote on it and we can appoint. I'd really like to get, you know, the, these positions appointed before the end of the year.
The only thing I'd be concerned about is if that gives enough time for people to submit those of interest. I don't know if you wanna do it that fast.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we know these positions here.
I mean, the other ones, I mean.
Yeah, and then if, if anything, we can wait to do the members at large.
Fair enough.
And Madam Vice Chair, I wanted to just suggest too that maybe the Town Administrator could put together the draft charge.
Yes.
For this committee too, and that we can review and.
Yep, okay. All right, moving right along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So right now I'm going to do number five and number seven in order. So, number five is discuss and possible vote to approve host community agreement charitable con- charitable contribution recommendations. So right now the host community money comes from the marijuana companies in town. So we have a list here that for, this is the, where we're suggesting, so counsel on.
Those are the allocations that have been made to date.
These are the ones that have been made to date? Okay.
Yeah, what I'm, we're asking for is authority to get a new process.
Oh, okay.
Basically, there's twenty-four thousand dollars that has not been appropriated.
Yeah, okay. So I, I think all these that are here right now can always use more money, but.
Well, I propose we do, Madam Chair, is we have an application process.
Yep.
And we could, you know, put the applications. The one thing we don't have is several of the people who were on the review committee last year will no longer be available, they don't want to be on the committee they represented and so on. So what I suggest we do is if you want to use the same process used last year, which was a subcommittee, then to vet applications and we can do that. I would, I would go out to the, to the various committees and request them to designate person, someone. And, and we can, that's fine, we can do that. Alternatively, if, if the board wants to just consider applications as they come in using that same process, that's fine too.
Okay. But we still have twenty-four thousand dollars right now, right?
Madam Chair.
Yep.
There were some items we did not approve, Ari, that's still hanging out there.
Yeah, a couple concepts, correct.
Okay, do you have any ideas, Rich, for what those couple of things are? Yes, no?
You mean the ones that are hanging out there?
Yeah.
One of the things that I wanted to do was I wanted to put banners on the poles going down the street here, and we still don't have the information on that yet, it's still hanging out there. We had a price tag.
It was expensive.
We, we just gotta work out the logistics.
All right, so do you want to refill these positions then, Ari, the subcommittee? Is that what you wanna do?
I think it's the board's pleasure. If, if the board wants to just consider applications directly, that's fine too. Or if, if you prefer to have the subcommittee vet them first, that's fine too.
Yeah, that's, that's a, doesn't matter to me which way we do it. Do you have a preference, Rich?
No, I don't.
I, I would suggest for the interest of expediency.
Yep.
That I, that I just go out and, that I put the applications available.
Yep, I think so. And you just send it to all these groups, put it on the town's website, let folks know. Okay, all right, so I will entertain a motion to create, to have the Town Administrator just advertise for, for any interest on this donation money. How does that sound?
So moved.
I'll step down in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Then we have four fifteen Millennium Circle site plan. So we have, the hearing is scheduled for December eighth, I believe, with the, what do you call it, the planning board, yes?
Yeah.
So do you have any comments on this one, Rich?
I got a lot.
You do, okay.
First, it doesn't, doesn't say how many employees there are, unless I missed it.
I had talked to Mark Resnick and he said there was one less employee than the number of parking spots they had.
Which brings up the next question. There's only twenty-one parking spaces, which is not enough.
Yeah, that's my biggest concern, as always, is parking for me.
Nothing but parking space problems with the marijuana facilities. The two major marijuana facilities are a problem because they don't have enough spaces. So that's a concern.
Yeah, that's, that's me too.
This is a twenty-four by seven operation.
Any other?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll write that one down.
The other question is, I don't see anything in here, Ari. I'm not saying you'd have to do it, but what are the water requirements? This is a cultivation facility.
So I double-checked today, Rich, we've not received a water connection application.
Okay, so why would we go ahead with this until we get that information?
Well, I mean, to be fair, it's kind of a chicken and egg situation. For example, I have another one we have coming up, and this may be a different situation, just, just for context. We have another one coming up, item nine, on, on, on a, a development that, whose site plan has changed dramatically from when they originally submitted their water connection application to totally submit a new water connection application.
Yep.
We could do that here. But I, I can tell you that we would, you know, I doubt, I doubt the footprint's gonna change particularly, so we could solicit an application.
I don't worry about the footprints. What I'm worried about is how many gallons. What I'm worried about is how many gallons they're gonna use.
They didn't go.
Well, given the situation with cultivation facilities so far, I think there's reason to be concerned.
Yeah, and I was gonna say they didn't go right to Taunton directly, did they?
Not as far as I know. I, I asked, I actually had a call from Mr. Ruda last week, and I asked him that very question.
So this facility is half of one of our cultivation facilities now, okay? And based upon that, those requirements, they're using, I don't know, ten, fifteen thousand gallons a day.
It all depends on the, 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 the big variable, for example, on three-ten Kenneth Welch seems to be their, their HVAC system. They uses a evaporative cooling system that uses just tons and tons of water. Um, the, um, the, the, the other, the other location on Kenneth Welch does not use the same amount of water because frankly, it's a different system.
Well, the, the other question that, uh, we still haven't got answers on is, uh, how are they reclaiming the water? From what I understand, that, uh, every three gallons of water, every three gallons of, they're throwing one away, I think?
As, as I stated on the other, as.
I believe somewhere in there. So, the question is then if, why don't we have them, why don't we ask them to drill a well?
Are you talking about this particular or three-ten?
Anyone, because.
Three-ten has, is, is, three-ten is using a great deal of well water.
I mean?
Three-ten is using a great deal of well water, in addition to.
Not for their, uh, facility? And you're still asking for fifty thousand gallons a day?
Twenty thousand in well water.
Wow, they got a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big problem.
Yeah, using a lot of water.
So anyway, so that's my concern about this too.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the planning board hearing on this is Thursday, right? That's the vibes, yeah. So, um, we can get this to them by then, right? Okay.
Because certainly, and I think it's probably appropriate, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think it's probably appropriate to say to the planning board that we would advise against approving any until we know what the water needs going to be, given the situation we're seeing elsewhere.
Yep, I agree with that. Do you agree with that, Rich?
I agree, and I guess it's disappointing that, uh, according to this application, we got it in the selectman's office on the fourteenth. We gotta fix this process because this process is broken. You know, we don't have enough time, not only our board, all the boards don't have enough time to review some of these plans.
Yeah, some of the plans we've been receiving lately too, they're so dark, you can't even.
Only they're dark, they're so small, I mean, I got, I got twenty-twenty vision, and I, I can't read them.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, so, that's what we're sending, right? We want to know, um, how many employees for whether or not they're gonna have enough parking, uh, what their water requirement is gonna be, um, and how are they reclaiming their water? And also, um, ask the planning board not to approve until we have answers to these questions, right? How do we say that? We would suggest.
Request that they do not make.
Request, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Tracy, we can reach out to Taunton tomorrow and see if they, I think, since last week on four fifteen.
Reach out, no, 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 no. It's up to the applicant to submit their application.
It is, but I, I.
Ari, this is where we had problems before. They submit their applications, they provide us the requirements, and then we review it, and then it gets submitted to Taunton.
No, I understand that.
Not before that.
I, I understand that. My, 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 my point was that we had a situation, as you know, with four-seven-five, Kenneth Welch, someone submitted to Taunton.
Right, they went right over us.
Before time.
Yep.
And because the clerk, I've moved it when they shouldn't have.
Well, then I hope Taunton understands now they're not supposed to be doing that.
Three-ten, they, they, they did an entirely extra procedural approach where they hook to a fire, as far as you know. So, I mean, we, we need to make, you know, we.
No, but we shouldn't be calling Taunton about the water. We should have an application in place that says what's the requirements on. How did you come up with those requirements? How many gallons per day? And based upon, you know, what their business model is. We don't have any of that.
Yep.
We should not be talking to Taunton until we have that.
Yep.
And the planning board should insist upon it. No, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right.
Board of Appeals, is this the planning board or Board of Appeals?
Planning board.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, uh, next.
I'll get earlier.
Okay, so, this is, um, next agenda item is number eight. Discuss renewal of boarding contracts with various towns regarding the Lakeville Animal Shelter. So, there's a sample at the back, which is the one that we typically use. We did raise the price last year from fifteen dollars a day to twenty-five dollars a day. Um, the towns that we boarder for are Acushnet, Berkeley, Bridgewater, Carver, East Bridgewater, Freetown, Halifax, Hanson, Rainham, Rochester, and Wareham. And last week, I mean, last week, last year, one-twenty-two to eleven-twenty-two. So far, we've raised over eight thousand dollars in boarding fees. So, um, this is, these, these go out annually, right, for? Yeah. Okay, so, um, if it's one thing that everyone loves in Lakeville, it's the animal shelter. So, um, I will, what are we looking to do here?
Just, I guess renew the contracts with the.
Yeah, yep. So, I mean, I'm, I don't think we need to, and I had talked to Dave Freights too, last week, and he seems that to feel twenty-five dollars per day is sufficient, since we had the increase. Does anyone have any comments, Rich?
Uh, I'd say the same thing I said last year.
Okay.
And I said last year, you got eleven communities that don't need an animal shelter, okay? And we're charging twenty-five to thirty dollars, whatever it is, per dog. Every one of these communities should pay a minimum of something to support the animal shelter. Uh, it costs us a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to run that animal shelter. It's costing these towns nothing to run an animal shelter. And so if they want to participate, there should be a minimum charge plus the fee of twenty-five to thirty dollars for boarding the dogs.
Okay. Lorraine, any thoughts?
Um, Madam Vice Chair, I remember last year during this discussion, um, that there was kind of a, a survey, um, gonna be looked, looked at, to see, um, help me out with that, Ari, I know, um, Christina was doing a survey.
We, we provided some information last year.
Yeah.
That was com- the com- comparability information, um, which we can, I can bring that back.
I mean, it's, I mean, the, oh, I was gonna say that it's self-sustained, but it's really not because it's not a, an enterprise account, so we do, we do fund that shelter. But it's, these are the charges that, um, for the animals from those other areas. I mean, we still manage a lot of our own, um,
Right.
strays and, you know, turn-ins and all of that too, so, um, but if the, um, the animal control officer, um, feels that the increase in, you know, boarding fees should be looked at again next year, then, you know, maybe it comes back to the table.
Mm-hmm.
But.
Right, so, you're right, the, the dogs and the strays that get picked up in Lakeville, we don't bill for them because they're our own, so we definitely use the service because we also know that people dump their animals in the country. They think it's better for them to be in the country, so, you know, um, yeah.
Yeah, Chair?
Yep.
We've had significant increases in energy costs too.
Yeah.
And we're expecting that, you know, going forward. But that's not in this one thirty-one. We gotta heat the place, lights, so forth and so on.
Yep.
And most of that one thirty-one is personnel, just to be fair. Um, you know, the ACO itself is, is seventy-six thousand of, of the, of the, that one thirty-one thousand, plus the cost for the vehicle and so on. If we didn't have an animal shelter, that cost probably wouldn't go away. Um, so probably about eighty thousand or so that, of that one thirty-one that is, that was just irrespective of, unless you, unless you fold it all into the police department, which some places do. So the net cost of the, of the animal shelter is more like, like fifty thousand or so? Um, you know, it's still a number, but I'm just.
The follow-up to that is we have to feed the animals, we have to clean the, uh, the place. It's much more than that because the personnel that we have has to do that, so.
Madam Vice Chair, I know that this, um, you know, we, we're entering the budget cycle, so I'm sure that we'll have some really good dialogue, um, when we get to that, um, you know, discussion, but I know for the purposes of this agenda item, it's just to, you know, talk about the, the con- renewing the contracts with these communities.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you want to talk about the contract?
The actual sample on the contract on the back?
Yep.
Okay.
Go to number ten. It's this example, it says the town, uh, the town, the particular town, show indemnifying the whole house, the town of Lakeville, its agents, officers, employees against any, all claims, damages, losses, expenses including attorney fees, medical fees for injury or death to any person or injury to the property arising out of the cause directly and indirectly by the dogs being bought at the Lakeville Shelter, including but not limited to the consequences of any attack, behavior, or any action of the dog. If the dog is surrendered to the town of Lakeville, the, the town that's bringing the dog will be released from the identification after seven days of the quarantine period. We just had a bad incident down there.
Yep.
You know, that's unacceptable. You know, because the liability, you know, it, it happened to be the dog attacked their owner.
Right.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Very seriously, could have been one of our employees, okay? That is unacceptable.
Well, I don't want to say this out loud, but that whole, that whole housing of that dog was difficult from day one, so.
And, and if I can, I'm just interpreting this, number ten, um, would be that the town that is, um, has the animal that's here, um, is still responsible for, you know, all, the whole situation, and Lakeville is not held harmless, um, except if, you know, the dog is released.
After seven days.
No, it says if the dog is, is released.
But after seven days, if the dog is there, the dog has been quarantined, then we're responsible for that dog after that. Including the adoption and so forth and so on, right?
Yeah, but the incident would have never taken place if things had gone the way they, it was voted on. So, that dog was ordered to be put down, someone filed an injunction, the dog was never supposed to leave the crate, and then lawyers got involved, and that's where that happened. Against our ACO's wishes, so.
But the dog should have been returned to that town then.
That, well, that's my question. My question is, you know, if a dog has been ordered to be, if it's our own dog, that's one thing in our town, but, you know, should we be, if there's a dog that has been, you know, determ- determined if a select board or anyone else has made that, we, I mean, we had to do that with a dog here in Lakeville. Um, we had to have it ordered, put down. I'm not so sure I want to be able to, I want us to be able to keep that dog. I don't know if we can put a clause in there that if a dog is ordered, put down in another town that we board for, that the dog should be put down, I mean.
I guess the question, um, Madam Vice Chair, would be, you know, what would, what would trigger one of the, the towns boarding their animal to surrender the dog to Lakeville? Like, what would the, the situation be? I mean, I know that that could be. These contracts run out when? At the end of December, right?
No.
So, so this is something that technically we could wait till the next meeting, um, we have some questions, but.
Yeah, I mean, we had some language in section eleven, um, about if the town is unable to provide the requisite services, they're looking very refused.
Correct, right.
And that was, that's an addition that we put in there, uh, for this version, for this addition of the, of the contract. Um, it, it would seem to me that, um, we would, I'm not sure of the rationale behind, honestly, behind that lawsuit in section, on, on, on section ten, and, um, where that originated from, I think probably predates me. I don't know if that's a good, good idea to continue that particular clause.
Right, so that other towns would, wouldn't be able to surrender their animal to Lakeville, like we wouldn't become the primary for their animal?
Yep.
The reason that another town would surrender a dog to the town of Lakeville is if, say, they bring in a six-month-old puppy, and they, the dog's perfectly fine, they want to put it in our adoption program. We can't adopt the dog out unless we are the owners of the dog. So we wouldn't be able to adopt out any dogs from any other town.
So the dog, with the incident that occurred last week, was not surrendered?
The town of Lakeville, it was the town of Carver's dog.
Yeah.
Um, David does make sure that, like, dogs that come in from other towns that he considers unadoptable, he will speak to the animal control officer from that town about euthanizing the dog. Yeah, and that would be number eleven, basically.
Right, so between ten and eleven, I covered that.
Okay. To where, it's just not gonna be like, you know, one of these towns is gonna surrender, you know,
Right.
thirty dogs because they just, they don't want to pay twenty-five dollars.
Right.
I think the important point is that, yeah, the town boarding the dog does not mean the town, it's just the dog, the dog that's surrendered to the town.
Right. If that makes sense.
I'm just trying to think, so if they pick up a stray in one of the other towns, it's, unless they turn it over to us, then it's still their dog, basically. Okay, all right, do we want to reread that? Revisit this and just look at numbers ten and eleven?
I just, I want to make sure that the town of Lakeville's protected.
Right.
Um, so I'm sure, you know, town council, you know, probably reviewed this way, way back when, but, um.
It's really run by town councilors more if you want.
It just, because, you know, we have a seasoned professional that has been managing the services at the, um, the shelter. I always look, you know, down the, you know, the road, that if somebody else, you know, were to manage that, you know, would they be able to do so within the, the language that is presented here without the history and the knowledge behind the activity?
Right, and I, I mean, I don't know when this document was created, this, you know, last time it was looked at by council, maybe something's changed.
Oh, we have a select board member that brought up, you know, a concern about.
Yeah.
This, so I think that, you know, it might be a good idea to at least.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, look into this.
Look into it, and then we can put this on the nineteenth too, and then we'll just decide that night if we're, um.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, these are hard to be voted individually, they're intimsible agreements, so to make sure that they're on the agenda, they have contracts reached out.
Okay, will do. Right, Tracy?
What?
The, each one has to be voted on individually.
I never have.
We never have.
We've always just done it together. We just do one motion and list the town.
It's all the towns.
Mm-hmm, but there's individual contracts for each.
Yeah, yeah.
The board's gonna have to sign them anyways, and if you're gonna do it on the nineteenth to get to them, you do it that night.
Okay, so, that's done. All right, so now we have the review and possible comments on the revised comprehensive plan for one oh-nine Bedford Street. So, I believe this went from twenty, like, double units, ten double units equalling twenty or whatever, to, um, single family. Um, and there's now gonna. Um, and there's now gonna be twelve of them. This is the one that sits a little bit off of Bedford Street, so you really can't, won't see too much of it. Um, but I will, uh, so this is going in front of the zoning board on the fifteenth, so whatever comments, does anyone have any comments on this?
Well, I reviewed the plan myself, um, Madam Vice Chair, and it looks, I mean, when I first saw this, I went, oh, this is significantly changed, but it looks like, um, there's, you know, a larger road here, um, the, I think it was on the last page, it looks like that, um, the fire department, you know, would have, still have their radius, um, to turn in that little elbow on there too. Um, I know that our board had concerns about the, um, the coverage of, I guess, being close to the butters.
Yep.
And it looks like that's been addressed here. Um, the visibility, I know, was a concern, uh, pulling out onto Bedford Street, but I understand that that was still under the, the original permit.
Yep.
Damn, these things are so small. Um,
Rich, do you have comments?
Yeah, this is a significant change to the original plan. Um, has this been submitted to Mass Housing for their review and approval?
Yeah, they lettered from. I'm not certain.
Well, it should be before it goes to the planning board.
ZVA.
Or wherever it is.
Um, I did talk to Bob, and I thought he said that they did everything starting all over again.
Have we received any questions or comments from the agency that may be?
Yep.
I mean, this is a significant change. It's not a minor change. They're changing all the units to put on individual lots under ten thousand, except for one lot, under ten thousand square foot lots. Our single-family houses, three, three-bedroom units. The others were not that way at all. There was two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units, and, um, so I, I think it's gotta go back in approval before we approve this plan.
Okay, so, we don't have a meeting before the fifteenth, um, so what can we ask these owning board? We wanna know if it's gone back to?
D H C D.
D H C D.
I'm truly saying we could just, I could just check with, you know, staff to make sure that it, that it had.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's.
Um, the other thing is that, uh, it still doesn't need to set back requirements for the town, you know, so there's, there's house, we know those houses still don't meet their requirements. And based upon their taking these and changing them to single-family houses and on individual lots, they should conform to the setback requirements for the town bylaws.
I'm sure the ZVA will.
Yeah.
We already mentioned that before, but this is a new plan. The other thing is that, um, I guess, uh, I was sent to five o'clock today, uh, having to do with, um, what they're asking for as far as waivers are concerned. Uh, I wish we had that ahead of time. But there, I looked at it, and it was forty-six waivers, um, that they're asking for. That's pretty significant. Twenty-six waivers from the bylaws, okay?
It's not, that's, it's not completely unheard of though, um.
Forty-six waivers?
No.
On one plan for twelve houses?
Sure there's been other developments that have, um, come in front of the ZVA with, with waiver requests too. But they'll review them and make their determination.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the first one, it says waive minimum lot width requirements.
They wanna change road layouts, they wanna change burns, they wanna do this, and they do that, I mean, you know. It's a problem. Okay, I guess I won't worry about it then.
Well, I mean, I, you know, we, we can put in this letter that we have a concern on all the waivers. Wait, front yard circle requirement for all lots. Um, so, I guess we can put in the letter that we have a, with concerns about all the waivers, so that they know. Okay. Uh, so.
Next. Okay, so three of the units, um, would be affordable.
Yep, three out of the twelve.
With twenty-five percent.
Okay.
And so nine would be at uh, market rate.
Yep. Okay, so this now begins the end of the year, um, licenses, so number ten is, um, review impossible vote to approve annual dancing on weekday, on weekdays, public entertainment on Sundays, livery and coin-operated amusement licenses, so. Um, I will entertain a motion to renew the livery livery licenses to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for JP's Limousine Service. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The addresses are posted, right? I think they're actually.
They're on posting notice.
Okay. Um, dancing on weekdays, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, to renew the dancing on weekend licenses to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for La Baron Operating Company LLC, doing business as La Baron Hills Country Club, Hawaii Corp., doing business as Orchid of Hawaii Restaurant, Lakeville Golf Club Incorporated, doing business as Lakeville Golf Club, and Lakeville Aerie Thirty-nine ninety-four Fraternal Order of Eagles, Inc. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for clarity, that the DBA, um, the Lakeville Golf Club, Inc., DBA Lakeville Golf Club is, um, Lakeville Country Club.
No, they're not known as Lakeville Country Club anymore. It's Lakeville Golf Club.
But the location is what we consider Lakeville Country Club.
It, right, but the legal name is Lakeville Golf Club.
Okay, well, we will check that. We're gonna leave it Lakeville Golf Club, and we can check it for sure, and if we have to make a correction, we will. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, for, make, I will entertain a motion to approve the coin-operated amusement licenses term, well, to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for Lakeville Aerie Thirty-nine ninety-four Fraternal Order of Eagles Incorporated, two machines, Lakeville Golf Club Incorporated, doing business as Lakeville Golf Club, one machine. So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, next, we have, um, I will entertain a motion for the renewal of public entertainment on Sundays. For Sundays during twenty twenty-three, all licenses would expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, for La Baron Operating Company LLC, doing business as La Baron Hills Country Club, Hawaii Corp., doing business as Orchid of Hawaii Restaurant, Lakeville Golf Club Incorporated, doing business as Lakeville Golf Club, and Lakeville Aerie Thirty-nine ninety-four Fraternal Order of Eagles Incorporated. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and now we have, um, agenda item number eleven. To schedule, um, dates for our upcoming meetings, and, uh, Ari and I went through the end of March. So these are the, we have, our next meeting is on twelve nineteen, and then after that, it would be January ninth. January twenty-third, February thirteenth, February twenty-seventh, March thirteenth, March twenty-seventh. Does that work for you? Rich, you good with those?
Yeah, I'm fine. I just don't like three weeks between a meeting, but that's okay.
Yeah. Okay, um, and I think Ari says tentative budget kickoff is February thirteenth.
Budget, um, you already had budget kickoff.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Budget presentation.
Yep.
On the thirteenth, yeah.
Yep, okay, that's that, and then as soon as we get closer, we'll fill in the three nights of budget talks with the department heads, and if anything comes up in between, then we can, um, put another meeting if we need it. So these look good for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, and now we have any news business? Any old business?
Not yet.
Yep.
Um, a few weeks ago, we talked about putting together a committee to look at the, uh, some of the requirements for, uh, Betty's Neck, having to do with renovations and parking and access and fixing the building and so forth, and, um, I'd like us to do that at the next meeting, please.
Okay. Can we put that on there?
Sure. Isn't anything that I should?
The reason why I bring it up is if we can put a plan together, we can, we can submit it to Plymouth County for opera money.
Is there, um, uh, I don't, do I have any, just, we'll just put it on the agenda, should be, okay. I don't know how many guys, terms of competition or anything, so.
Yeah, no, we'll just put it on there and, um.
The second thing is the feasibility study for the, uh, COA.
Yep.
Uh, we're gonna get them, well, should get that project moving. So I don't know what you want to make up of that committee to be.
Okay. You have a facilities manager, no?
No, but we have to.
Okay. All right, anything else? Anybody? Ari, anything?
No.
Tracy? Hold on, all right. Uh, so with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically with PBA Local One-eighty-five, IAFF Local Thirty-one eighty-eight, and Laborers International Union. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and not to return back to open session. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor will call vote. Carboni, aye?
Uh, look here, Maron.
Shady, aye? All right. Thank you, everyone.